Welcome to the January 3rd, 2017 Planning Board meeting. I have to announce that the Planning Board is recording this for the purpose of minutes. LCAD is also recording this, and I have to ask anyone else if they are, so please state your name.
Chris Goodrow with Ramires.
Thank you, Chris. Fan the audience. We're gonna jump right in. We have a 6:00 PM public hearing for zoning by law change.
The Planning Board of Town of East Long Meadow will hold a public hearing on January 3rd, 2017, at 6 o'clock, at the school community conference room of the high school, 180 Maple Street, to amend the East Long Meadow zoning bylaw, 1991 revision, by removing Board of Selectmen, and replacing with Town Council, and other procedure changes to bring the bylaws in compliance with the town charter. Revisions are available for review by the public at the offices of the Planning Board, Town Clerk, and Board of Selectmen. Board of Selectmen?
Very good. I'm starting getting ahead of myself. Thank you, Robin.
You need to change your notice.
Yeah.
Why?
Because there is no offices of Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, well, it's in the Town Manager's office.
Thank you.
May I reread that, Robin?
Certainly.
That sentence, I mean.
Yes. Another area where they're available.
And the bylaw, the revisions are available for review by the public at the offices of the Planning Board, Town Clerk, and Town Manager.
There we go. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Actually, George, did you want to start? I know.
Basically, all we have done is to take the existing zoning bylaw and change all references to Board of Selectmen to the Town Manager, okay? With the additional changes that under Section 5.10, the plan of development that previously would have been approved by the Board of Selectmen will now be approved by the Planning Board under Section 5.11. The plan of development needs to be submitted to the Planning Board, not the Board of Selectmen, and the Board of Selectmen does not need to redo the plan because they don't exist anymore. And Section 5.7, car services activities, will simply remove the Board of Selectmen, and it shall require the approval signatures of the Board of Public Works and the Planning Board. The rest of this is just substituting, pretty much, Board of Selectmen, Planning, I'm sorry, Town Manager for Board of Selectmen.
George, I noticed under the Section 5.1, the elderly residential district. That's the only district in here that didn't go directly to the Planning Board, the site plan directly to the Planning Board for review. And I'm just curious if Robin knows why it was put in originally to go to the Board of Selectmen, and then from the Board of Selectmen, they were to turn it over to the Planning Board for their input?
I think the reason that they had to do that, and that was the original 1963 bylaws, was because the Housing Authority was involved at the time. So it was a statutory issue. However, the Housing Authority is no longer involved. They are involved in the housing on Benton Drive. That's the only one that they are. Everything else is privately owned.
Where in town is the elderly residential district? Is there?
Summers Road.
Summers Road, which is the brownstone.
It's brownstone.
That's the only.
That's the only one now?
Yeah, that's the only one. And quite frankly, this was put in when brownstone was going in way back when.
Right.
And it was designed specifically for brownstone. So, you know, I think, you know, taking the Selectmen out of it and putting it to the Planning Board, which has to do the review anyway, makes perfect sense.
I mean, I'm in total agreement that it makes sense. And the reason for my questions is I'm probably gonna be sitting there pitching it to the Council and trying to explain it to them.
Sure, yeah, I understand.
So, background knowledge is good.
What about Corin Hill?
It's not in the elderly residential district.
Did you just say another reporter either?
That's a different district.
Yeah. So the only one in there is basically the brownstone area.
Basically, yeah.
Wow, okay, I didn't realize that.
Well, and the problem is, years ago, the Planning Board used to provide the Board of Selectmen with copies of the site plans, and it's just duplicitation. I mean, everything is, and they're throwing all those out now, so it's duplicative. It's, we have all the plans. There's really no reason. They don't want them. They don't know how to read them.
Okay. I'm gonna open it up to the other members first, because I've got a few different things to talk about. Deb, did you see anything? Or Mike?
I have not.
No, no. I didn't see anything.
Tide?
I just said Town is spelled wrong.
Yes, I saw that.
7.01. Other than that, I didn't see anything.
Yeah, I saw that too. That doesn't work.
George?
I have no, I mean, I basically wrote this.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, one of the things I noticed right off is you get Section 5, elderly residential district. It's actually, under the bylaws, is Section 5.1. And it shouldn't be underlined, because none of the other headings under 5.1, 5.2 are underlined.
What is it? It's just Section what?
It's Section, it says 5.1, elderly residential district.
It just says Section 5.
Just 5.
What was I gonna say?
Right, that's what I'm saying.
It just says Section 5.
But in our bylaw, it should read Section 5.1.
Okay.
5.1, elderly residential district.
Fine. I'm not sure why it got transposed that way when this was redone, but...
It didn't get transposed. That's the way it was. But it should be Section what?
5.1.
Right now, it's 5 comma. It should be 5.1.
And there shouldn't be any underline on it.
Yeah. But I mean, this is...
Exactly, and that's what I'm looking at. The other thing I noticed is under 5.11, if you go to the very end, it references the Selectmen again. The Selectmen may require any additional information needed to permit a thorough review. That's in the bylaws, but we're not asking for any changes.
Where is that?
It's actually, Section 5.11.
See, what's happened here is, Robin has extracted from the bylaws, the stuff I changed.
No, I put, this is a copy of what you did.
Is it?
Yeah, absolutely. I highlighted it for the Council.
Okay.
So, I mean, I'm looking, the Selectmen may require any additional information needed to permit a thorough review.
That should be...
I think it should be struck.
That should be struck.
I don't think we need that at all.
All right, so that was the last...
It's the very last line under 5.11.
What does it say?
The line reads right now, "The Selectmen may require any additional information needed to permit a thorough review."
Okay, and it's the last paragraph. All right.
And then, on our sheet, under 7.01, obviously, we've already caught Town was spelt wrong. But as we scroll down to the third line, it says, "The Board of Selectmen shall also appoint two or more associates." That should be the Town Manager.
Town Manager, yeah.
Now, if I can, Ralph, the Charter calls for this to be given to the Town Council exactly the way it is, with the red outline, red...
Yes.
They didn't seem to like that. What do you want me to do?
We have to submit it, I would assume, the way the Charter requires it. I mean, I don't understand. I think it's easier for them to read.
I mean, you were there.
Yeah, to read and say, "Oh, you're removing this, and we're putting this in."
And I sent them an email, letting them know that, but I never heard anything back, so I just don't want them to say, you know, it was a sloppy way of presenting something again, because that, that was embarrassing.
It was. I mean, there was a few things that were embarrassing that night, but we won't get into the fact that we're told to submit it one way, I submit it that way, and then Town Council says, "No, you're supposed to submit it the way you did before."
Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out. How do you want me to resubmit this?
I would submit it in the outline. I mean, as far as the Board, please chime in if there's difference, but I think the outline that we have, with the strikeout through it, in red, what we're taking out, makes the most sense.
Yeah, they need to see exactly where the changes are, so I agree with you.
I agree. What we're doing in the bylaw committee is sending them both ways. Send them a clean copy, and send them a marked-up copy. Okay, so if they want to just look at what it's gonna be, they get the clean copy. If they want to look at what actual changes were made, they can go to the marked-up copy.
So they both for their review and their disposal?
A little standard practice, which is good. Maybe you can read it forward.
I mean, if everything passes, we're gonna have to do it anyways, so...
Well, I mean, I don't have any problem with that. I'm just trying to find the ground rules.
Right.
When it says in the Charter, this is exactly the way it's supposed to be submitted. It doesn't say one way, two ways. It says this way, so...
This way, exactly.
Let's do it this way.
I mean, I'm happy to, I'm happy to undo all that and give it to them both ways. I'm just asking for directions.
Yeah, I think they need to see the changes.
I think we should do it the way it's written in the Charter.
And how can you approve something? To me, the first question would be, okay, what did it say before?
Right. Yeah, and I think it's important to...
And if it's written word, and if it's in the Charter.
And do you want to look over those other things that you said, that you think were submitted?
I don't have it on this computer, unfortunately, so I need to go back and recheck that.
And again, this doesn't have to be in until, like, the first week of February, I believe, we looked at. So, I mean, what my thought was, is with the Board, too, we'll open, close the public hearing, we'll go through our changes, and at the next meeting, we'll just do a quick review and say, yes, we want to send those to them.
Okay, prepared.
Does that make sense?
Makes sense, yeah.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so at this time, I will open it up for any comments that the public may have. Chris, any comments? Okay, hearing done, I will bring it back to the Board. Being a public hearing, Robin, if we close it, can we still make additional changes to the Board at the next meeting? So, should we just continue?
Make your motion to continue.
I have a second, I want to...
6 o'clock, next meeting.
Any further discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor?
Aye.
So, public hearing is being continued. And that's exactly what we'll do, make the changes, we'll take a look at it next meeting.
Sounds good.
Make sure everything's perfect.
Yeah.
Do it once, and hopefully, hopefully, everything works. It's 6:20. So we have a 6:15 meeting regarding possible revocation of special permit for Feng Health Center of Massage Service, 611 North Main Street.
I don't know.
You don't need to read the letter, do you?
Um...
You already did.
No.
Letter from who? Not the same one we read last time, is it?
It's already public record.
Okay.
Twice.
Have we got any response from them?
No.
Okay. In the record, we have not received response to all that.
Okay, and they're not here to talk about it, neither.
And that was also sent to the address that was listed.
And a property owner.
And a property owner.
And it looks like it was sent in return and receipt, so it looks like they acknowledged the fact they received it.
Right.
Okay. Do we have a copy of the actual special permit?
Yes. So, it was returned to sender because there was nobody at that address, under that name.
Right.
And Mr. Burek came in today and asked if he needed to be here tonight, and I said, "No," because it really didn't have anything to do with him. It was a special permit strictly that was granted to the owner of the business.
Now, under the special permit, photo identification, or driver's license, current residential address, any therapists, any employees, that all has to be updated annually in December. If I remember right, when I talked to you, that wasn't updated this year. We've had no contact whatsoever with them.
No, no. Wasn't last year either.
So for two years, they haven't updated any of the information, hence the reason we can't get in touch with them to discuss this. I would be looking, I mean, that alone, to me, would be reason for revocation, but I'd like to hear the Board's thoughts on it.
Is there anything to talk about?
Really anything.
Pretty self, pretty straightforward.
Yeah, straightforward.
I mean, they're in direct violation of...
I mean, they're not even here to talk about it.
Well, also, item two, under the special conditions of the special permit, is that Feng Ling Liu is the only person allowed to perform any type of massage until such time as new employees are approved by the Planning Board by the examination of proper licensing as required. And it's pretty obvious that there were other people there, other than her, and we never approved...
We don't have proof of...
But we don't, that's an alleged, but what we do have proof of is that...
Basically, we have files.
They haven't kept up with any other stuff, and...
No, which is why we can't get in contact with them. They had a responsibility to maintain their special permit and updating of their permit annually.
Right.
And that didn't happen, so...
I would make a motion to revoke the special permit.
Would second.
Is there any further discussion on the revocation? Hearing done, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, there's the special permit.
Okay.
And obviously, with the revocation, we should probably attempt to send another letter to them, plus the property owner, letting them know that the business's special permit has been revoked for that property.
Should it be a certified, or is it already?
Oh, well, should be.
I would think that certified might not be a bad way to go.
Should we do certified to...
I think we should.
Absolutely. We need a paper trail here.
Yeah.
Discover ourselves.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Turn receipt.
So we will do up a letter, I will personally sign it, and we can send it out certified to both. Okay, we're gonna jump right into some waivers, then. We have a request for waiver of site plan, Mile Cast Media, 273 Westwood Ave.
I'm sorry, this sticker from the post office is no return to sender for Mr. Burek, but he signed it right here. So...
So the property owner signed it, but the property, business owner has not received it.
Right. So that clarifies that. We never received the green card back.
When was that sent out? December?
December 22nd.
Yeah, that's plenty of time.
Yeah, chances are, we didn't receive that back, because usually, on certified, they'd try two or three different times.
Yeah, they'll try.
You'll receive it back if someone signs for it.
We got DM's the 28th, yeah, and it was signed for.
Right.
But that's just strange that it would say, "No meal receptacle." Means he doesn't have a mailbox. So I just didn't want to clarify that.
So the owner of, owner of the business...
He received it, and he acknowledged it today.
The owner of the property received it.
Right.
The owner of the business...
Business, we have not...
We have not, okay.
All right. Very good. I'm sorry, I just wanted to clarify that.
No, thank you.
Mile Cast Media.
Yep, Mile Cast Media.
Are we ready?
Yes.
Request for waiver of site plan review. Property owner is Scott Ricky, 273 Westwood Avenue, East Long Meadow. Phone numbers are listed here. Name of proposed business is Mile Cast Media. Owner of business is Stephanie Lynn Schaefer, 273 Westwood Avenue, East Long Meadow. Property address is 273 Westwood Avenue. Property district is B, allowed use is yes. Proposed hours, it's not open to the public. Number of employees, including owner, is one. Date of last parking plan is non-applicable. Summary of business hour operation is home office, studio for podcast production and website management. No clients come to the home. We communicate through Skype. The application has been signed and dated December 5th, 2016.
Okay. Sounds like a straightforward home office.
Motion to approve?
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, jump into the next waiver of site plan review. Sunny Smart, 43 Maple Street.
Request for waiver of site plan. Property owner is Home LVR Maple Crane Realty Inc., 98 Green Meadow Drive. Phone numbers are listed here. Name of proposed business is Sunny Smart. Owner of business is Salu Lohai. Business owner's address is 98...
Oh, wow. I have no idea.
That's why these real...
It's actually 98 Green Meadow in Long Meadow.
What is it?
It's Green Meadow Road in Long Meadow.
Green Meadow Road in Long Meadow, okay. Property address is 43 Maple Street. Business district is, property district is business, allowed use is yes. Closed hours of operation are 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Total number of employees, including owner, is two. Summary of business is a convenience store. Application has been signed and dated December 27th, 2016.
So he's been there for over 15 years.
Yeah. Yeah.
Business.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, waiver of site plan review, Pilgrim Colonial LLC.
Property owner is David Bennet, 12 Pilgrim Road. Phone numbers are listed here. Name of proposed business is Pilgrim Colonial LLC. Owner of business is David Bennet. Business owner's address is 12 Pilgrim Road, East Long Meadow. Property address is 12 Pilgrim Road, East Long Meadow. Property district is A, allowed use is yes. Closed hours of operation are 8 to 6, Monday through Friday. Number of employees, including owner, is one. Summary of business operation, home appraisal service, using home computer to provide appraisal services. No clients, or signage, or customers. All transactions are over the Internet or phone. Application has been signed and dated December 27th, 2016.
Sounds straightforward, so...
Yes, it is.
Home office, yeah. Yeah, home office for an appraisal service that's done offsite.
Make motion to approve?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, let's jump right into some administrative issues. At the last meeting, we had asked 45 Baldwin Street to make corrections to the stormwater management plan and to the plans.
Right. And the second one there is the change in the plan, not the first.
This one.
That one. And this letter just came in at 5:00.
Okay.
That letter wasn't complete. So Bob, excuse me, Bob called him, and that came in about quarter after 5:00 tonight.
And that's what I was gonna ask, is if Bob had a chance to see this.
So Bob has...
Yeah, Bob's the one that sent it to me.
Oh, perfect.
From whoever wrote it.
So he's happy with it.
So these are the update, December 22nd?
Yeah.
Okay. Robin, does this need to be read in for the record?
Yes.
Here's a letter, McMahon Family Nominee Business Trust, Gary S. McMahon, 10 Captain Scott Road, Harwich, Mass. Attention, Robin McDonald, Planning Board, subject parking plan, 45 Baldwin Street. Dear Robin, per the Planning Board's request, McFadden Family Nominee Business Trust, Gary S. McMahon, will be responsible for the system maintenance, cleaning, inspection, and any maintenance requirement for the storm drain located in proposed parking lot north of 45 Baldwin Street. If you have any questions or concerns, please contact Tom Wilson or me at, and the phone number is listed here. And the letter has been signed, Gary S. McMahon.
And the engineer provided additional information to that to say exactly what the actual plan was gonna be for the maintenance.
Okay. I know on the plans, they had asked to show inlet where the stormwater system was, and on the new plan, they have, they have adjusted that and showed that.
Here's the letter for the report.
Would you like to see it, George?
Yeah. And I did have a chance to speak to Bob this afternoon, and he was happy with the plans, the way they were resubmitted, and he had no problems with them. So, I think with that and with the letter, we should be all set with 45 Baldwin. I believe we approved it already contingent upon the new plan, so there's nothing else for us to do.
Except for tell people to roll the plans the opposite way. Roll plans the opposite way. They don't want to...
Now, scan for...
Okay, I will sign that as soon as the meeting's done. I think we're all done with that conversation. Michael, if you'd like to come back. I just had one additional matter that I wanted to discuss. It is in regards to the Section 6 finding on Pleasant Street that we had done at the last meeting. There was some confusion whether it was Residence A or Residence C. After looking at it and bringing it up, it is Residence C.
I wished you'd mentioned that today, because I have all the information that you would have needed on it to show you. And what the problem was is the GIS, if you look at the GIS, it's obvious. And I did call Smith Associates, had him re, you know, just relook at it, and he did say that he did find pins, and that was one of the issues.
Right.
The GIS said one thing, the building inspector went by the GIS, I went by the building inspector. It was a comedy of errors.
Exactly.
And, I mean, I'll take full responsibility, I did not look at the plan.
No.
No, I mean, I didn't look at the plan when it came in. I said to, you know, I made sure that a certified plan was presented, and the application was as it should be. I should have looked at the plan and looked at Michael's measurements.
You're 100% right, because I did pull up the GIS, and it is way different than what this is. And that's why I had asked at the office to make sure that this was sealed and done on the ground by Michael Smith.
And I, and I did do that.
Yep.
And I also called the office today and asked for financial information so that we can reimburse, because I believe that because it was my error, we should reimburse her for her cost for the surveyors.
That's what I was gonna bring up to the Board.
I agree as well. And it's, it's a comedy of errors, it could have happened to anybody. It's an honor of state.
But I mean, I take full responsibility. I don't throw anybody under the bus.
But we've corrected it. We corrected a mistake, so it's no longer...
We had a building inspector, let alone not have a building inspector.
Right.
Exactly.
But, right.
So...
Yes, I would agree.
Thank you. But I do take full responsibility.
Like I said, it, it happens. I mean, I didn't notice it. Obviously, I looked at the plan, and I was trying to find whether it was Residence A, Residence C. It doesn't actually state it on the plan, and that's why at the last meeting, it was like, "Let's just approve it. It's already built."
Yeah, it was built before it was built, yeah.
It doesn't really make a difference, but I think that would be the appropriate...
And so, they didn't violate any, any...
Exactly.
No, they just didn't build the permit.
Yeah, done, because we looked it up while we were in the last meeting.
Yeah, but they paid for it, correct me if I'm wrong, but it never got processed. No fault of theirs.
Right.
Right.
Again, I want to get that out there, so...
Okay, yeah, like I said, it, it happens, I mean, I didn't notice it, obviously, I looked at the plan, and I was trying to find whether it was residence A, residence C, it doesn't actually state it on the plan, and that's why at the last meeting, it was like, let's just approve it, it's already built.
Yeah, it was built before the...
It doesn't really make a difference, but, but I think that would be the appropriate thing.
And so, it's built, they didn't violate any, any of the...
Exactly.
No, they just didn't build the apartment. Yeah, none, because we looked it up while we were in the last meeting.
Yeah, but they paid for it, correct me if I'm wrong, but it never got processed, no fault of theirs.
Right.
Right.
Again, I want to get that out there, so...
I mean, and they're, they're wonderful, they were wonderful to work with.
They should not be penalized for...
I have not contacted her yet.
I'm glad we're doing the reimbursement, yes.
I didn't want anyone contacted until after the board had a full discussion on it.
I did not contact her yet, but I have followed through with Smith Associates, and I'm reading on the...
I think they will be thrilled as far as the new year coming, and be extremely surprised to receive a check.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
With that, does anyone else have anything they would like to...
Yeah, just to remind everybody that a week from tonight, at six o'clock, at the Council on Aging, the board of, the board, the town council is meeting, and part of that meeting is going to be a public meeting regarding community development, okay? We are recipient of part of the community development block grant?
We haven't gotten it yet.
We haven't gotten it yet.
This is part of the application, we have to do this.
This is part of the application process. So, there'll be somebody there from PVPC to lead the process, and it's gonna be talking about if we wanted to apply for something, what would we use the money for, basically, right?
No, basically, just giving the, that, what we want to apply for is, is internal, it's just basically a requirement of the actual grant, we have to have a public hearing to say that the town has applied for it, and these are the projects that would be allowed.
So, you know, if you're interested in that, show up, and it could be interesting. A public hearing does mean that you're looking for input, so, you know...
And I'm also looking for input as to what you might want to use this money for. The money that we received last year from, no, I'm sorry, this is, this is a community development grant. DTLA is...
That's something else.
Money that we can receive for technical support from PVPC that we used to do the open space plan review or upgrade.
Right. We did a CDVG with Agawam a couple of years ago, right?
Two years ago, right.
Two years ago, and that was used for...
Housing, housing, in the, we used to have to do a targeted area, we no longer have to do a targeted area anymore, which allowed, you know...
People don't like to be in the area.
Right, well, because it, it had to be under, you know, a lower income in order to, but the money that was used was available to people to do improvements on their homes, and they never had to pay it back, as long as they didn't sell their house for fifteen years. If they sold their house within that fifteen years, it was, you know...
Like a retro...
Yes, uh-huh, smaller.
Corated.
So, we used it for that, we used it for the ADA plan.
Oh, that's right.
We also used it for the housing authority for locks and ramps at the senior facilities. I think those were the three. What we're looking for this year with Hamden, Hamden is, is desirable to have sidewalks, so we have to, we have to agree, and so far, what we've done for the community development grant is we've been looking at a tri-town, no, two-town.
Tri-town.
Yeah, Hamden, maybe Wilburham too, we're not, we're not quite sure, nothing is solidified. To have meals on wheels, and to have it delivered, not meals on wheels, I'm sorry, the, the soup kitchen, the, what do you call it?
All right, food pa, food pantry?
Yes, 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 the open pantry.
Yeah.
Rather than just have it at the senior centers, to deliver food to the homes that, that might need it. So, it'll be a mobile food pantry, that was it, thank you, I, I keep thinking meals on wheels, but that's already, you know...
Along with the sidewalks on Hamden?
So, it's, it's that, and, and housing again, and we, East Long Meadow is looking to implement our ADA plan. Because we had, we had to do the ADA plan in order to get any grants for that, and now we're looking to implement it, and it's all the way around town, any town buildings that need to be brought up to ADA standards. So, those are the projects that we're looking at, whether we get approved for them or not, I, I don't know. It's, it's competitive.
I'd love us to include sidewalks.